Okay, we're on. Good evening and welcome to the Mashpee Board of Selectmen December 18th meeting. If you'd join us, some pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And again, if you're joining us in a moment of silence for those who have lost their lives protecting rights and freedoms. Approval of the minutes.
I make a motion to approve Monday, November 27, 2017, regular session.
Second.
Okay, in favor of that? Roll call.
Yes.
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 Cat, public comment? No public comment. We have, I guess we're pretty close to that. Public hearing. We have a public hearing at 6:35, private to public road conversion, Winslow Drive and Holly Farm Drive.
Pursued to the code of the Town of Mashpee, section 150-6D, the Mashpee Board of Selectmen will be holding a hearing, public hearing, on Monday, December 18, 2017, at 6:35 in the Warcoy Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. The purpose of said hearing is to discuss the private to public road conversion of Winslow Drive and Holly Farm Drive as shown on plans entitled Winslow Drive Eastman Taking Plan, dated July 28, 2017, and Holly Farm Drive Eastman Taking Plan, dated July 28, 2017, prepared by Baxter Nye Engineering and Survey. Copies of the plan may be reviewed in the Office of the Board of Selectmen, Mashpee Town Hall, per order of the Mashpee Board of Selectmen.
Do we have somebody from the neighborhood?
That's what I just did.
That's the official.
Okay.
Winslow Drive?
Winslow Drive? Any comments? Yeah, let's come to the microphone or just speak if you'd like.
Can I just speak from here?
You can't because the people at home would love to hear your voice.
Asher.
I'm accustomed, as I am, to speaking in public. Is this it? Okay. My name is Callie Comacino. I live at 11 Winslow Drive. I'm the first house as you come into the development. I was taken aback by this letter because I have absolutely no knowledge of what constitutes a public road or a private road, and how, when I bought this house in '01, how did I know it was public or private? Does it have anything to do with my taxes? And why only Holly Road Drive and Winslow are the only two roads affected? There's a lot of roads coming off Winslow. So those are just a couple of my questions. And also, the biggest question is, what brought this up? What generated this talk of going from a private to a public? That's all I can think of for now, but maybe later. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine, do you have the answers to that? Or is there a petitioner here for the, are you the petitioner of this?
Yes.
Would you like to address those issues? Absolutely, please.
Ed O'Connor, 3 Holly Farm Drive. I initiated the petition to make it to a private, from a private road because I realized that when it's not a private, when it is a private road, the town has no responsibility to repair or do anything to it. That's why I did a see if the neighbors that didn't know about it knows that you can have it accepted by the town if they accept it. So betterments that are assessed, usually up to 20 years, that's added on to your tax bill, and at that point, or all during that time, henceforth, any repairs or whatever is done, this town, it's no longer private. Private actually means no man's land. No one owns it. No one's really responsible for it, only if neighbors get together, if there's a big pothole, if there's a drain or any problem. And that's the reason why I initiated the petition.
I believe that's pretty much what it comes down to.
That covered?
Okay.
How does a petition work? Fifty percent of it?
Fifty percent of the petition has to agree to this.
Yes.
And I have another question. On the total cost, I assume this is a complete tear down, right to dirt, starting over? Not, there's no such thing as an overlay or anything? They don't, they always do that, go right to dirt?
We can have Catherine's here for that one.
Right.
Yeah. I, just so you know what, it wasn't explained that well, is any resident of the road can form a petition. He has to get fifty percent of those on the road. If there was ten houses, he has to have at least five houses to even bring it to us. That's how the petition came about. That's how he was able to bring it to us.
And the reason why I'm doing this, the other way, is because I felt like a shoe salesman. So I just dealt with my two roads, and there's other people interested in their roads, they can form their own petitions. That's the reason why these two are just here, not the whole. It is a big development, but that's the only two roads.
So you've got enough signatures for your street?
Yeah, to initiate this, and then after those meetings, then they'll have to go back and see if they agree.
Then you can move forward, right.
The fact I was trying to get across is, this wasn't a road taking by the town. This is an issue.
By me. I, yes, private petition.
Private petition, right.
Correct.
If you don't mind me just clarifying, what's, which address are you, three?
Free Holly Farm.
Okay. Do you have it listed as P.O. Box, maybe?
Yes, 143.
Okay.
Correct.
That's, I just want to make sure.
Another question, this is the cost, right? The final cost of the road?
Catherine.
That's on this.
Is that?
Two-hundred-and-ten thousand?
Yes.
Two-hundred-and-ten sixty.
Not to exceed that number.
Not to exceed.
Right. Could be less.
Could be less. Have a general idea of what they mean by could be less? Just like a little bit or a chunk?
It won't be more than this.
Excuse me? It won't be more than this, but not knowing how much less, if it would be less.
Why don't we have the Director of the D.P. W. step forward and ask that question for you? Thank you, Catherine.
So I guess responding to the first question, yes, this is a complete reconstruction of the road. We do an assessment of the road, just because, as you state, from this point forward, if it is accepted, the town is responsible for all maintenance and repair of the road in the future. So we want to make sure that the road is constructed to the town's standards. There are, there is some cracking on the road. There is some, an area where the road is breaking down. The depth of pavement is not sufficient for us to do a mill and overlay, so we are essentially looking at a reconstruction. As was mentioned, this is a budget number of not to exceed. We are looking forward to potentially next year, we don't have construction costs a year in advance, so there are some estimating that's done. We have a budget number for drainage. If this moves forward, we'll do a full assessment of the drainage and whether or not additional drainage capacity is needed. If it's not needed, then that could be up to a $20,000 savings. It's difficult to say, you know, until we really get into the project. In the past, I'm going to say that it probably comes in, I'm looking at the finance team, you know, probably, you know, between eighty and ninety percent of the estimate. So, you know, we want to make sure that the town isn't responsible for any construction costs that exceed this number.
Ask the woman of shame for a second.
Is that satisfactory? Did you have your answers in that conversation?
I'm still not clear why only those two roads are affected. Everybody comes in through Winslow. There are many other streets. So just that street and my street are going to be at the front of this construction?
Yes. They don't pay, to use your street, they don't pay for the access or the use of your street. That would be correct. They would pay for their streets if they were to join on and be a part of this, but they would only pay for the frontage of their property. That's how it breaks down.
And that's all I'm going to pay, the frontage?
That's what it breaks, it's not the frontage, it's a percentage of, right?
Equally divided.
Right, equally divided.
Well, that's, I don't know, that doesn't seem right to me. I don't know why I have to pay if somebody wants his road repaired.
Well, it's your, it's your road that you're paying to have paid.
Well, that could very well be, but it's difficult. I'm eighty-one years old, and I'm two, three years from selling the house and going into, and now I'm going, I understand that I will have to pay it all.
I'm going to have to ask you if you want to continue to speak. If you want to step up to the microphone, just to have further concerns.
There is one more, one more fact that has, it comes back to you now. In order for this to go, now that you have the figure of $12,262, you have to get fifty percent of the residents who are on that road to agree to it.
Well, apparently, they already did, right? Didn't you say they had fifty percent?
They just got this today.
This is the initial petition. After this, I have to go back and go again. If they don't want to sign, they don't have.
But you already got somebody?
Yeah, no problem.
So I would assume they would continue to sign.
I don't know, but when they get their bill, maybe not. That I couldn't say. One question, approximately twenty-year assessment on this, what would be the yearly tax increase?
About eight hundred bucks.
Per year?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Oh, it's, Callie Comacino again. Am I to assume that because it was a, that I was paying less taxes than the people who were getting all these services?
What services?
Well, what are we going to get? We're going to get paving and all this. The other streets have paving and?
No, no, no. Only your street is going to be paid.
I understand.
You're paying for your street.
Okay. But the whole development is now private? Is that correct? Okay.
Your street will become public?
Yes.
If it passes and you get the number of votes.
Exactly. But as of now, the whole place is private?
I don't know the answer. All of those streets are all private? Yes.
Okay. So then, when we become, I'm going to be paying more, but the other people will not be paying more in taxes?
That's, that's correct. But your road will be covered by, well, it's not correct?
What?
The tax rate will stay the same.
It's the betterment, right.
The additional betterment.
It's the betterment, I'm sorry.
So it will not be the taxes. So they'll be paying off their share of the road.
Right. It's the betterment that would add to your total tax bill.
It's still money out of my pocket. All right. One more question. If I sell the house before this $12,000 or whatever, do I have to pay off the balance? If I, say it's $800 a year, you assess me. If I sell the?
That carries with the property, the future owner.
Oh, so I don't have to pay it off if I move in two years?
Yeah.
Oh, all right, okay. Is there anything else I should know that I don't know what I don't know?
About this or anything else?
Oh, we don't have that much time. I'm an old lady, I'm not going to last that long. Just about this, this was very distressing to me, and I didn't know what, you know, what it entailed. It just entailed.
There are two steps left in the process, getting a petition to get it on town meeting warrant, and then town meeting voting to approve it. So if there are people who don't want it, you'll have two opportunities to stop it.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a vote on that, please.
Yes.
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 Do we need to make a motion on this?
Public hearing. The Board of Selectmen, acting as a licensing authority for the Town of Mashpee, will conduct a public hearing on the 2018 Annual Liquor and Entertainment License.
We need to have a motion on that, on the?
On the road?
Right.
I'm sorry.
Do we just have to?
Just close it?
I close.
I would close it.
No, you didn't do it. Don't have to do anything.
I did, okay. The Board of Selectmen, acting as the licensed authority for the Town of Mashpee, will conduct a public hearing, 2018 Annual Liquor and Entertainment License Renewals, in the Town of Mashpee. Said hearing will be held on Monday, December 18, 2017, at 6:45, in the Warcoy Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass, per order of the Mashpee Selectmen. Do you want me to finish?
Much love.
Okay. Please be advised that the following Town of Mashpee annual liquor license holders have filed their renewal applications. Andy's Package Store All Alcohol, Andy's Market, The Barn, Best Buy Beverages, Inc., Liberty Liquors, and South Cape Wine and Spirits. Do we want to vote on that, or them all at once?
We usually take each individually.
Do them individually, as a group, the small groups?
Okay, so someone needs to make a motion.
I make a motion we grant Package Store All, follow up there to?
The five listed.
Andy's, The Barn, Best Buy.
As listed.
As listed.
I second.
Second. Okay, roll call on that, please.
Well, wait a minute. Aren't we doing a public hearing?
Yes.
And then you've got to close a public hearing?
Oh, we've got to close. Do we need to close a public hearing?
Oh, then vote, okay. I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Well, do we have any comment from anyone?
I don't think so.
No one's here?
Sure. Public.
Yeah. Do we have any comment from the public on the issuing of the liquor license? No, seeing none? We just closed the public hearing.
I second closing the public hearing.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Yep. Okay, so we can take a motion on that.
I make a motion that we grant Package Store All Alcohol Liquor Licenses to those listed.
Second.
Okay, now roll call.
Yes.
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 I just wanted to make sure that they were all in compliance.
Yep.
Okay, Package Store Wine and Malt, Mashpee Mart, Commons Convenience, Mashpee Mini Mart, and Organic Market.
Okay, need a second on that.
Oh.
Okay, and again, roll call?
Yes.
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 Make a motion for Restaurant All Alcohol, Asia, Blue, Bobby Burns, Cafe Trivia, Estria, Finally Dino's, The Lanes, 99 Restaurant, New Seaberry Country Club, New Seaberry Athletic Club.
That's it.
Quasiment Valley Country Club, Sienna, Sopranos, and Wicked.
Second.
Okay. First and second. Again, a roll call, please. Roll call, yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Make a motion for Restaurant Wine and Malt, Bangkok Thai Cuisine, Burrito Bistro Mashpee and Zoe's.
Second.
And again, a roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Motion for Inholders All Alcohol, Poppin' Essed In and Zachary's Pub.
Second.
And roll call.
No on Zachary's, yes on Poppin' Essed In.
Yes.
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 Motion on Commercial Club All Alcohol, Willoughby Country Club.
Second.
Yes.
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 That yes was a second.
I understand.
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, now, this is 2018 Annual Entertainment License Renewals. Please be advised that the following Town of Mashpee annual entertainment license holders have filed their renewal applications. Do we want to do them individually or set up the whole? Mr. Chairman?
I think we can do the whole list.
Okay.
I have a question.
What do you think? You don't think so?
He just has a question on the list.
I think we have different restrictions.
They've got different things.
They've got different things. You're right. So let's start with number one.
Okay.
Blue, recorded, make a motion for Blue, recorded and live.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion for Bobby Burns, recorded only.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion for Cafe Trivia, recorded only.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Estria, motion for Estria, recorded and live.
Second.
Before we go, I'm not sure of the tribe being one, even though they don't, where are we including the deck licenses? We do have a lot of differences.
I don't know.
I don't know that either.
What did you say?
The deck.
I'm talking about the deck licenses. We're going to lump some of them in here if we have to find them out, such as we've got the rule about after 10 o'clock and all that.
Yeah, I don't have the deck licenses separate.
Indoor and outdoor seating.
Yeah.
The only thing that we do have are the memos that are attached from building and the police that are listed.
I assume, my assumption was on these, that unless otherwise noted, we're continuing the conditions that exist.
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking if the motion should be.
Well, yes, it should. Because I don't want to get into any slippery slope.
The only other question I have, though, guys, is should we have opened a public hearing on this portion of it as well?
I, oh, it was included in the original.
You did the liquor.
No, it said, it said, annual liquor and entertainment licenses.
Did you open it, those are both of those?
I both, it's, they're both together.
I just wanted clarity.
Yes, that's good.
Why don't we remotion this?
So that each motion carries with it the proviso that under the same terms and conditions, they're in their current expiring.
Existing terms and conditions.
Current expiring 2017 license.
No change.
Carried over, no change. I agree.
That makes sense, that's safe.
Second.
Okay.
That motion.
So that's a blanket motion for all renewals. I think we need to do them individually if you want.
Yes.
Okay, so that's a new motion on that. We have a first and a second, we'll do a roll call on that motion.
Yes.
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 It can be prompted.
Okay.
Okay. A motion for Finally Dino's, recorded and live, dancing by patrons, pool tables, and video games.
Sorry.
Just a quick question, I don't think we took a roll call on Estria.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
We did. John was the only one that didn't vote on Estria.
Yes.
Finally Dino's, recorded and live, dancing by patrons, pool tables, and video games.
I second.
Yeah, we need a, we need a roll call on that.
Yes.
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 A motion for The Lanes, recorded and live, dancing by patrons.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A motion for New Seaberry Athletic Club, recorded and live, dancing, exercise by patrons.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Motion for New Seaberry Country Club, recorded and live, dancing by patrons.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Motion for 99, motion for 99 Restaurant?
Second.
Recorded only.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Motion for Quasiment Valley Country Club, recorded and live, dancing by patrons.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Motion for Sienna, recorded only.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion for Sopranos, recorded and live.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Motion for Wicked, recorded only.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion for Poppin' Essed In, recorded and live, dancing by patrons.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Motion for Zachary's Pub, recorded and live, dancing by patrons, theater and floor show, billard, pool, table, and video games.
Second.
Roll call, please.
No.
Yes.
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 Motion for Willoughby Country Club, recorded and live, dancing by patrons.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Motion for Burritos Bistro, recorded only.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Motion for Zoe's, recorded only.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Phew, here they look, the licenses.
Okay.
So they're passed.
Done.
Okay.
Next. Next.
Carol.
The Board of Selectmen acting as a licensed authority for the town of Mashpee will conduct a public hearing on the request of New Seaberry Properties LLC doing business as New Seaberry Country Club for close, for deep cleaning and maintenance as follows. Restaurant effective January second, two thousand eighteen through March twenty second, two thousand eighteen, initially reopening on Fridays and Saturdays only. Snack bar affected January fourth, two thousand eighteen through March twenty second, two thousand eighteen, initially reopen weekends only, weather permitting. Said hearing will be held in the Warpoint Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall on Monday, December eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, at six fifty, per order of the Mashpee Board of Selectmen.
Okay, um, any comments?
Do we have anyone here for this?
Mr. Caddis, ready?
Would you like to pop and introduce yourself to the board?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Chris Card. I'm the president of New Seaberry. This is our standard procedure as we go into our winter months to deep clean the operation, prepare for the season.
That's good. Did you, how did the law work out with the second floor this, this past summer? Did it do pretty well? I know you weren't there, so.
You know, I've been on, in the role less than a month, but I believe it was successful and happy to report next fall after the season closes how well it did.
Good, good, right, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. So the premise behind all alcoholic beverage licenses for the annuals is that they're twelve month a year operations. And that's been the practice.
Right.
And yet annually, we have this lengthy closing that corresponds with the slow time. It doesn't strike me that you're cleaning the whole time because you're open during weekends when it's advantageous to be open at the beginning of the season and not. So, you know, it kind of bugs me every year we go through this little dog and pony trade in my mind that we're giving you a year round license and you're the only one of our year round licensees who closes routinely for the same period of time every year. Just doesn't really strike me as a straight faced compliance with the licenses.
Certainly something we can look into. Like I said, I've been on the role for less than a month, so we can certainly investigate and come back with more information if you'd like.
I just, I'm just putting my flag in the ground. It just bugs me every year.
Good point.
I don't think you realize. I'm not asking you for an answer. I'm just, I know you knew, um, but it just.
Just throwing it out there.
Next year, I'll go along with it this year, next year, I'd like some reason to change, to feel better about it.
We'll work on that.
More, more real year, uh, year round than just a every period of, uh, cleanup.
Yeah, I mean, place has to be really dirty to take three months.
Well, you know, it never bothered me too much except all of a sudden it went from they're closing down which, and a lot of cleaning, a lot of remodel been done, but all of a sudden they're opening up every week for this party or that party.
Yeah.
You're either open or closed.
It's a business decision, it's a business decision, not a clean decision. So let's be honest about it.
Good point. Good point. Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
Now, roll call on the closing.
Yes.
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 Make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
And roll call now.
Yes.
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 This year.
This year.
This year.
The Board of Selectmen acting as a licensed authority for the town of Mashpee will conduct a public hearing on the crest of New Seaberry Properties LLC doing business as Poppin' Esset Inn to close for deep cleaning and maintenance effective January first, two thousand eighteen through March twenty third. Initially reopening for functions only in April and à la carte service in May. Said hearing to be held in the Warpoint Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall on Monday, December eighteenth, six fifty five PM, per order of the Mashpee Selectmen.
Enough said.
I made my point.
So can I?
I make a motion to grant the, uh.
Close the public hearing.
Got to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call on the closing.
Yes.
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 Yes. I make a motion to grant the request.
Second.
And a roll call on that.
Yes.
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 Okay, Mr. Chairman, you're on.
All right.
Where are we now?
Communication.
Communications correspondence.
Are we?
Mm-hmm.
We have the, uh, Water District, Mashpee Water District, response to, uh, the request for an environmental oversight, oversight committee designated.
They've decided to decline the invitation.
Do we have any explanation for this?
Yeah.
I mean, come on. How's this making you feel about your grand plan now?
No comment.
So what do you, what is?
Sam was, Sam was ready too.
Well, Sam's always ready.
I can't do right.
I, no, no, I learned, uh.
Just, that's it. We don't need to have to do anything.
Yeah.
Alright.
So just, so the, uh.
It's a good one.
Huh?
So just.
I warned you.
So just read the, uh, read the letter.
I'm gonna read this into the record just so you, just you know.
You should still have the two words.
The, um, the Board of Selectmen had asked to, um, have a, uh, an individual water commission invited to participate in the environmental oversight commit, uh, committee. The response was, um, um, that the Board of Water Commissioners, response to your letter November seventeenth, November seventh, two thousand seventeen, requesting the appointment of a representative from the Mashpee Water District in the Environmental Oversight Committee have decided to decline the selectmen's invitation at this time. So, um.
Yeah, why would you call water supply? I'd be concerned about environmental quality.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have a, uh, participant. Yeah.
General contractor, right?
Okay, we have new business. We have the approval of a general contractor for the Quasnet School project. I know we have a representative here, um.
Catherine Sims.
Catherine's.
Catherine, uh, you want to come up and, uh, bring us up to date? We have all the information and maybe if you can give us a little bit more information.
Sure, I will try. And I have our project manager here with me as well and a representative from the school committee is in the audience. So we did receive bids for the general contract for the Quasnet School project. Um, we received eight bids. They ranged from just under seven million dollars to just over eight million dollars. Check of the, uh, references, the D-CAM certification, um, bid documents for the apparent low bidder, J.J. Cardozzi, was completed by the OPM and, uh, design team. And they found, um, Cardozzi to be very qualified. Their D-CAM rating on twenty nine projects was ninety three out of a possible one hundred points. And, uh, their references were all very favorable. And so in your packets, you have, um, the recommendation from, um, both Siva and Raymond Design Associates. Planning and construction committee met on this past Friday. They voted to recommend award of the contract. The contract did come in less than estimated. I do have a breakdown of the budget that Siva had prepared earlier tonight.
Something came in less.
I, I, I'm still.
It came less. So, um, and I'll, I'll let Siva explain, um, the chart that the, the, the columns of the far right used to be, um, updated, um, um, portion of the budget. Um, I also just have for your reference, um, a handout. Is there enough?
Yes, they all have.
In the summary of, um, the process. So as you know, there were a few hiccups along the way. Uh, we were before the board back in September for approval of, um, procurement to, for a construction manager at risk. That was approved by the board. We started the process, advertised the RMQ. Unfortunately, we only received two responses and, um, we were required by state statute to have a minimum of three. So we had to, um, reject those responses and, and revert back to the conventional, um, bidding process. The bid was advertised at the end of October. Um, files of bids were received November fourteenth. One of the filed sub bids, we only received a single, um, bid, uh, and that bid excluded a particular contractor from using them. On the advice of council, we rejected that bid. Um, a bid protest was filed with the Attorney General's Office by that contractor, HVAC contractor. And the Attorney General ended up siding with the, um, sub bidder. So, um, because of that, we did have to delay the general bids to this past Tuesday, uh, the twelfth. And those were the bids that were received. Um, that ended up in about a, a one week delay of, of when we originally had anticipated a contract award. The good news is we still, if you flip on the, the second page, the schedule for the CMR did anticipate the awarding of the sub bids under that process at this same meeting. So really, we're still within the timeframe that we had hoped for, um, starting construction, you know, sometime April to take advantage of the April vacation. So that is still what we are anticipating at this point. And then I'll have Siva come up and kind of quickly go over the budget for you.
Good evening. Uh, this is Siva Sivulogan again. Thank you for the opportunity. Uh, in this chart that you have before, the blue column is the, um, it's the agreement that town has with the MSBA based on our initial estimate. So this is what the agreement states. Based on a total project cost of ten point four seven million. The MSBA was going to reimburse three point seven eight million and the town's share was a little under seven million. So that's what the agreement states. And again, this is based on the schematic design estimates that we did back in spring, in the spring, uh, in seventeen. Based on the current hard bid that we got, we received last week. And based on the reallocation of what, what is excluded, a rough draft of what is excluded. The total project cost is eight point two seven million. This is just the first column to the right of the blue column. The MSBA is going to reimburse us two point nine million against this number. And the town's share is going to be a little less than five point four million.
What made the current estimate come down?
Uh, just to give you, in the package that Catherine and the town manager distributed, we received eight bids. The first four bids, the lowest four bids, were approximately forty thousand dollars off. So, uh, it's a very aggressive bid and I believe the market timing was just the right time. We hit them, I think, when we tracked the GC bids that were going on, there were only two other schools that bid the project between October and December, in the similar market. So I think we hit the market at the sweet spot and we, so we have four low bidders and of the four low bidders. When we did a quick check, number, the lowest, the third lowest, who is, uh, GNR Construction, and the fourth lowest, who's Greenwood, they are all competent and qualified to do the work.
Could this number change?
Uh, no, it won't.
It will stay.
Stay the same, yeah.
Could you give me the total number of indebtedness between the state and the, the bottom line number?
It's the first column to the right of the blue column, which is eight point two seven million.
Eight point two seven million and this is, this is what we're liable for?
No.
Yeah, uh, not.
No.
No, I know it with.
On paper now.
Wait a minute. This figure doesn't go any higher. Is there a way this could go higher?
Change orders.
Change orders, correct. Yeah, unforeseen conditions. If the, the, the eight point two seven also includes a lit, a contingency amount of four hundred and seventy five thousand. That's the number just above the eight point two seven. So this is the.
The four seventy five is included in this eight two seven, alright?
Correct. That's what MSBA will participate in sharing, should there be change orders.
Okay, this, the reason I'm asking this question, this, these numbers have been all over the ballpark since day one. I can remember that we were talking a million point one or something like that. And every time it turned around, last, the last go around was is, uh, we were told that the only way to go is at risk. Now we're back to the contractor thing. So I just want to know, next time you come in, it's, this is the number I can pretty well put my head on, eight point two seven is what we're at, right?
That's, yes. Given all the information we have today, that's the upset limit that we are seeking approval.
So I was a little confused by the cover memo. You know, their, their construction bid's six million nine ninety four, right?
Yes, yes.
And you say it's exclusive of soft costs, the project design, project management, et cetera. So basically what you've just told us today, that's roughly one point two five million in soft costs?
On top of that, correct.
So it's a difference between the six nine, six nine nine four and the, uh.
Eight one.
Two seventy.
Yes, but also includes four hundred and seventy five thousand in contingencies.
So if everything goes great, you won't spend the four seventy five, but that's, so what was hard, what was impossible to tell from the package we got in advance was what the total project cost was going to be. All you gave was the construction cost. It said there were some excluded costs, but they were unclear. So it's one point two five on top.
Yes.
Right, the soft cost, right.
But that, it was nowhere in here was the description.
Right.
The package we got, I, I was totally confused.
Right.
Right.
We all saw the same thing, right? There were no numbers, but it had a soft cost.
Right. So your initial.
It had a number, it was lower than it is.
Your initial estimate was closer to ten.
Yes, yeah, yep, yep.
Right.
Again, that had the same contingency.
Understood. Apple to apples. We were looking at, when we went into this town meeting, we were looking at ten and now we're looking at eight, eight four.
Yes, sir.
In, from what I can remember, the last time we had this conversation, I thought we were going to be somewhere between five and six million anyway. And that's where we are with, with the better bid.
Our share. Our share.
Yes. So, and that's just where we.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. I think the, the, the timing helped because that's, the range was from six point nine nine four million to a little more than eight million. So that's a million bucks just within that range.
So I assume you're high, you came in higher because you were estimating based on.
The other schools.
The more competitive, or the more contractor friendly bidding environment back in the summer.
Yes.
And that kind of changed.
Thankfully.
Last question, let's just still go on timing.
It's, uh, we, we were off by a week because of the bid protest, but we were planning to hit this Board of Selectmen meeting for your.
Well, I don't mean that. I mean when you get into the building of the school.
We are shooting to get, we are still on track. We've talked to the windows manufacturer. We are thankful that we got a good windows subcontractor who is the file subbid. So we've, like, we've already begun discussions with them and we are still on track to start window replacement come the spring break. So we've worked with the school. We've got a good facing plan for the windows. Windows are the most critical item for the building. So we are still on track.
I'm, I'm concerned about the construction taking place during school time.
We've had extensive discussions with the school principal.
I know you have. And that's why I'm asking you, are you still able to meet the timelines you came up with?
We have to start installation come spring break and we will go towards Thanksgiving or this time next year to wrap everything up. And that's the extent of the model work.
Was the bid, subbid protester part of this winning package?
Part of the, sorry, I didn't understand.
The, the guy who sued, appealed your, your bid, your rejection, is he part of this, the team for Cardozzi?
Yes, yes.
Is that gonna be a problem?
No, his portion is only three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars.
What is it?
It's all for the mechanical, removing the rooftop units, putting them back, all of the windows where I had the heat units.
It's the HVAC.
HVAC.
HVAC, correct.
So it's ex, uh, quite somewhat external for the construction process?
It's, yes, we can, and, uh, I think the town council, or in my opinion, the town council was right in rejecting it because we, we didn't have a bid protest from the only GC that was include, excluded. Because he can't, he can't bid this project because he doesn't have a file subbid for the HVAC. So that's the reason why the town councils, uh, asked us to reject the bid, which is by statute, I think, the right decision, but the AG thought otherwise.
Was this contractor in multiple bids?
No, it was only so, yeah.
Just for that subcontract?
HVAC, yeah.
But he was only with Cardozzi?
No, he said no, sorry.
They all had to use him.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So you kicked him out on another bid for another GC?
Yes. No, the, he's, Apex was the HVAC file subbid. Apex stated that their bid could not be used by company ABC. I did forget the name. So, so what that means is that company ABC.
Yeah.
Could not bid the GC portion of it only because he didn't have an HVAC file subbid.
Okay. So was your problem with the subcontractor or the contractor?
No, the, we followed the law. We followed the statute, the requirement, and he protested it, but the AG's office thought otherwise and said, no, this is okay, can go.
Who protested it?
The file subbid.
Why does he care if he was on, he was on the low bid?
But we rejected the thing outright because he said company ABC cannot use them for their bid.
The, the file of the bids are, are, um, busy first and then the GC usually picks, you know, which subbid they want to work with. Um, because there was only one HVAC, he was it. He was the only person that all of the GCs can use. Except, as Siva said, he said, all of you can use me except you.
And the U was who?
Was a, a, I don't remember the name of that.
I guess what I'm trying to get to is, is there a problem with this man, with this construction team associated with this bid file?
No.
I'm getting, I'm getting this. I'm, I'm guessing that at one time along the way, he wasn't paid by this general.
There was, I would say, exactly.
That's what it comes down to. That's what it comes down to.
The particular GC that was excluded, yes.
Okay. That's all we had to say.
No, and the, and that GC did not indicate, like, he did pick up the documents, but he didn't, didn't, he hasn't protested yet.
He's a, he's a, he's a good subcontractor. He didn't want to work for the other general. That's all. Got it?
That's, that's, that's all.
Great, great. Well, the numbers are where we wanted it to be. That's the good thing.
So what are you asking for tonight? Or the contract?
Yes.
Make a motion, we approve the selection of J.J. Cardozzi, Inc. of East Providence to be the general contractor for the Quasnet School roof in the amount not to exceed six million nine hundred ninety four thousand dollars.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? Saying none. Roll call please.
Yes.
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 Right.
Just have one more thing.
Go ahead.
To add to what you.
To add to what you questioned regarding, uh, the total cost, I was previously told specifically that, uh, this contingency of four seventy-five is the definite comfort zone, so we should be fine.
Any changes to four seventy-five?
That's, that's what I'm saying.
Right, they did a good survey on this, I can, I'm sure.
I, I was just concerned, numbers have been floating back and forth on this project.
There's been millions going up and down.
Would you rather go up, a million and quarter, or the down a million and quarter?
No, I'm very happy with it going down, but that doesn't mean what's happened now, someone might as well.
Right, right, but they've done enough study on this building, they shouldn't have all of the problems analyzed and know where they are, great, thanks, Eva.
Thank you. Thank you.
Question, school roof.
Okay, here we go, a big one.
Number two?
Cape Tech High School.
All right.
The one.
Okay, we have an update on the Cape Cod Technical High School project bonding process, Mr. Craig Mann.
Good evening, um, so, myself and the assistant town accountant, Lisa Frye, attended a meeting on November sixteenth at the Cape Tech, um, with the eleven other towns in the consortium, um, the Cape Tech anticipates a bond rating of double A when they go to issue, um, the assessment for the town of Mashpee and every other town is gonna be based on, um, the enrollment in the school, and, uh, there was discussion at the meeting about possibly doing like a, um, a three-year average enrollment for the cap proportion of the assessment, so that it doesn't spike one way or the other quickly, um, you know, based on enrollment, based on that year, um, the only thing with that is they would have to open up the agreement, so they're a little hesitant on doing that, but that'll be, you know, all of what I'm discussing is the preliminary meeting and, you know, it's all gonna, it's not gonna change, it's gonna change a little bit, but it's open for more discussion, um, so, the seven, basically the seven towns that were in, uh, had the most skin in the game per se, uh, we're gonna be making decision, because the other four towns said, you know what, it, it's such a small amount, this apportionment, that it doesn't matter, we can do it inside the levy, we can do it outside the levy, you guys decide how you wanna do it, and Mashpee was one of those seven towns, um, so, they deferred to us to determine the financing options, um, I put in your packages a schedule, um, of s- s- uh, nine different options as to how they were done, the first one is the best one, I'll reference to that, so basically Cape Tech is gonna take seventy-five million dollars is what they anticipate in their large bonding, um, and they had the option of thirty years, twenty-five years, or twenty years of financing it over, um.
Is there a debt scheduling referring to?
Yes.
I don't have it, no, all we have is the print.
I don't either. I'll have the memo.
Apologize, I thought that was in the package.
Did you get, was it in yours?
No, we just put the look on.
Okay.
One sec, okay, um, so, the first page, it basically thirty year, twenty-five and twenty year, I apologize, I couldn't get clean, um, debt schedules on the front, so it's all got our, uh, our check and scratch on it, so, under each option, um, option one was taking seventy-five million dollars initially, at the very beginning, um, in February of two thousand eighteen, and the first payment would be, um, November two thousand eighteen, which is in fiscal year nineteen, option two, for every single one of these options, was taking seven million dollar ban in February of two thousand eighteen, and then, um, going for a bond of seventy-five million dollars.
What do you pay on the bans of these?
Excuse me?
What's the interest rate on the bans?
Depends on the size and the value, I would say probably two percent, thereabouts, um, and, so.
So the school building's already, doesn't provide bans, like the, the wire trust?
No.
The wire trust, you can ban it, almost zero.
Yeah, no, the state doesn't do that, they'd be going to.
Do on the wire side?
I know, but not on the school side, um, so, then they would, they would, uh, bond it permanently in, um, November of two thousand nineteen, thereby being our first payment in February of two thousand, or fiscal year two thousand twenty, um, and then option three was to take seven million dollar ban and a forty million dollar ban and do it in February of, um, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, um, a permit bond, and then our first payment will be in fiscal two thousand twenty-one.
And what's the amount of the first payment?
The amounts of the first payment are about, well, I'll, I'll get to that, can I, um, so, basically, most everyone decided the thirty year was out, because they didn't wanna pay more interest, um, than they needed to be, option one, I think, was, option one was kind of out, because I mentioned that some towns haven't, uh, gotten it as a debt exclusion yet, so to budget for fiscal nineteen payment, when we don't know if it's gonna be a debt exclusion or not, would be very troublesome on a lot of the towns, um, so, most of the towns agreed that option two for the twenty year and twenty-five year was a, was the best option, um, the, so, and the, you can see on the top says six and nine, on the bottom are pages six and, they're labeled six and nine, and those have the debt schedules associated with, so it's four hundred thousand for a, um, basically four hundred thousand dollars a, a, a year for a twenty-five year bond, and four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for.
Twenty-five.
A twenty-year bond, and you can see that they calculated.
So it was just six nine, six and nine at the top of these handwritten in?
Alright, so what is twenty year and twenty-five year memo?
So you're looking at, for a twenty-five year, you're looking at eight cents on it per thousand, and for a twenty-year, you're looking at nine cents per thousand, um, so that's where it sits, um, they're also gonna have, after the seventy-five million dollars is done, they said, basically, they'd have a seven million dollar bond again, um, to, basically for wrapping up their costs, is what they anticipated, which would probably be about another six hundred thousand dollars to the town of Mashpee base principal.
It's a lot of money.
Um, so that's, I would, you know, if, if the, I wrote, I would recommend that we go with a twenty-year term, um, on option two, if the debt schedule passes the ballot box.
What's the, uh, what's the timing if we need to have an answer on this?
There's gonna be another meeting in late spring, early summer, um.
I don't wanna decide on this, I haven't, I mean, I.
Right.
No, you can't get it dropped on your lap tonight.
Right, no, no, there's, there's, it's gonna be.
That's not his fault.
No, I'm not saying it is, I just, I'm not, I.
No, I'm just providing much.
I can't follow these numbers.
I just want it clear, it's not his fault.
No, I understand.
Um, yeah, so there'll be, there'll be another meeting late spring, early summer, so that they can look at, okay, what's the interest rate market done?
So this will really go in October town meeting?
No.
No, maybe not.
You already voted it.
But the debt exclusion.
But the debt exclusion.
Debt exclusion would be, should be this spring.
Yeah.
We should just decide what we're doing, I mean, I don't know, why we fuss around waiting to make a decision on that, you know, we voted to support this thing as a board without any finance plan, so.
You gotta go for a debt exclusion.
Oh, we needed that exclusion.
Yeah, was there any conversation of a shorter term, a term less than twenty?
There wasn't, but there wasn't, there wasn't objection to it either, um, I think the biggest issue was some of the people was just, okay, how much, um, how much can tax, taxpayers burden?
A little late for that, people voted to pay the project.
Seventy-five, twenty-five.
Well, you know, so.
That's right.
We can bring it up, we certainly can, we're, the, the biggest thing is.
You wanted that much, why, why soak ourselves for twenty years on extra interest then? I'd just be interested in seeing what a shorter, if you can summarily dismiss a thirty year, because you pay too much interest, I'd be interested in what a shorter term duration would be on this.
Agree.
Do you have to come to the consensus with the committee as all, or does each town make their own?
The, whatever the majority of the towns choose to do is what works.
By way of vote, per someone to the.
Nope, by town.
By town.
Um, I did ask for a twenty-five year level principal payment, um, thereby cutting the interest down, and I could ask them again for a twenty-year level principal payment that would cut the interest, it wouldn't be even amount of payments, it would be, you know, it'd be graduated down.
How do you deal with, if we do a debt exclusion, how do you deal with variation year to year in, um, our assessment, is that gonna, if it goes up, because we have more kids, does that mean it's gonna kick over to the general operating revenue?
It'll just be raised as additional letting.
Yes.
What if we, but you're gonna do a debt exclusion up to an amount, right? That amount is set on a pro.
No, we're not going to do an amount.
What are we gonna do, what's, what's the plan?
There's.
You don't do a debt, when you request a debt exclusion, as we, um, as we did with the Quasnet project, you don't state an amount in there, you just request that the project be funded through a debt exclusion.
For whatever the ultimate cost.
Whatever ends up being for.
This is a little different in that, with the Quasnet School, we went for, for town meeting first, and then the debt exclusion at the ballot box, this is just gonna be at the ballot box, this isn't gonna be through town meeting.
So you're not gonna be able to, really, we're not gonna be able to answer what our total cost is gonna be, because we don't know what our share of the student body's gonna be over the life of the debt.
Now, now it'll change for everybody.
It's all last year.
I know, so, you know, typical questions, you have, how much is it, and what's it gonna cost me annually, I mean, typically, you know, we try to boil things down, that it's gonna cost you X dollars per year, and we don't have a clue.
Well, no, I ran, I ran some numbers based on what.
Historical.
Well, based on what, um, we have here on, on the amortization schedules, and for a three hundred thousand dollar house, you're looking at nine cents, um, per thousand, which is twenty-seven dollars per year.
Based on current enrollment?
Based on current enrollment, which is a percentage.
So if enrollment changes, 'cause remember.
Correct.
They're gonna be drawing all sorts of kids in for the building, bigger school, so who knows what our share of that new student body's gonna be?
Have we any idea what the formula is, is up or down?
What do you mean?
On enrollment, what it costs up and down is on the enrollment.
It's thirty-two thousand dollars, thirty-five thousand dollars a kid, ten of which is on your gen, your operating side, twenty of, twenty-five of which is on your operating side, ten of which is on your debt side.
Yeah, the debt side, that's what I'm talking about.
Right now, it, you know.
Whether it goes up or down.
And you don't have a bid yet.
Correct.
So, before you get locked in on any numbers, you don't have any, you got nothing to base this on, you don't know how many kids, you don't know how many kids are going to school, you don't know how many of them are ours, and you don't know the construction cost, and you don't know the term of the financing, other than that, you have all the information you need to make a decision.
We got a town meeting, you voted it in.
That's right.
Right, with no plan.
With no plan.
Right, now, and I know this, it probably come up along the way, but, um, there's no, there's no maximum for the town of Mashpee as far as the, uh, students, number of students, don't they regulate it per town?
Nope.
And they're gonna promote more.
I know they are, well, but that's from all towns as well, man, it's not gonna be just the town of Mashpee.
No, I understand.
Enrollment's probably gonna increase, you gotta bring the schools.
But it's only six hundred and fifty students total, I believe, wasn't that the amount?
Yeah, that's what.
Right, six hundred and fifty students total.
The town, the town that was most worried was Yarmouth, um, because they're at a.
Yeah, because they're right there.
Well, no, they're historically low, they're historically low enrollment right now, um, so they're a little, they're very worried that they're gonna.
They're gun-shotted in the regional school district, because they have a, they have a terrible arrangement with Dennis.
Especially a brand new high school, it's gonna be magnificent.
Enrollment will be out.
Well, we gotta figure a way, so, it's, you know.
Yeah, it's a little late in the game.
Doesn't matter.
That's right, you gotta figure out a way to go, move forward.
So you're not engaging with them again in a group setting until spring?
No, not, not planning that, um, but I just wanted to bring you the.
No, it's useful, I'd like to see the schedule.
Yeah, but, but as I'm looking at it over the years, it goes down roughly twenty-five perc- uh, a quarter of a percent, um, for the five year, over a five-year period, you went from twenty, thirty, thirty-five to twenty-five to, uh, was it thirty?
Twenty to twenty-five?
Yeah, so, um, you know, drop it down, I mean.
Yeah, it's, I mean.
Just depends how much.
The difference between their rating and ours, we're triple, right?
We're tripling.
So what's that translated to, you know, for a given amount?
Probably about fifteen basis points, probably about fifteen basis points.
And why are they not better? Why are they not better, they've got this claw through back to us, what's the problem, why are they a crappy rating?
Because they go based on the, all of the towns in, that are in the consortium, and we are one of the best.
That's probably a wild idea, but can we, uh, pay them one lump sum?
I'd ask that same question, no, we can't, yeah, I, trust me, I had that idea.
Yeah, and?
No.
No.
Why?
Because it helps the interest rate overall.
Because I can't, I can't borrow, it's, it's, it's done every year, every year, that assessment, and I can't borrow based on an assessment, I have to borrow based on a project and a bonding, in that respect. I, I tried, trust me, I tried.
You save some money.
If there's someone who's gonna try and save you interest costs, my wife can attest to it.
Do we pay it, be, be a year ahead?
Nope, nope.
So whatever we agree to, it has to be, the agreement has to be the same terms for all the towns?
Yeah, whatever the, you know, if, if they all decide, you know what, we're gonna do thirty years, option three.
So we'll all have to.
We're all stuck with thirty years, option three, but there was a lot of, a lot of appetite for twenty years, option two, that was what they, that was what the appetite seemed to be for.
Thought you would be cozy enough to the fourth, some, uh, free rider towns that don't care, make block of five folks.
Send them a Starbucks card.
Seriously.
From Mashpee.
You're right.
Any other questions?
Not right now.
This is the first time it's been done.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We'll get you some copies.
Well, yeah.
Yes.
That's not a nice Christmas present.
Well, we know where you're getting.
Well, we did, but we didn't.
Right, exactly.
I don't, I don't agree, I don't think anyone realized.
I don't think they realized the cost.
What do you mean?
Yeah.
Oh, you mean the general public?
Yeah, we did, we knew it was gonna be a lot.
All right, we have a, uh, an approval, um.
Make a motion, waive the tent permit fee for homeless for the holidays.
Second.
Firefighters.
Okay, first and second, a roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Appointment of the Oversight Committee.
Oh, hey, the schools could put somebody on the environmental oversight committee.
There you go, approval.
The largest, they couldn't.
Yep, so we have the approval and the appointment of the Environmental Oversight Committee.
Make a motion, we appoint Mr. Tom Oppenstedt as the school designee for the environmental oversight.
Okay, add a roll call on that one, too.
Yes.
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 Um, we have again, approval of appointment of the Environmental Oversight Committee.
I would like to appoint Ashley Fisher.
Member at large.
Member, member at large, right.
Second.
Okay, roll call?
Yes.
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 And, uh, we need to look at a review and approval of a revised license fee schedule, and, um, I think this basically come up, they took a look at it, um, I, I know at one point it started at the, uh, oh, what's the new place, oh, but the old, um, Flumers town.
Nakamal.
Yeah, Nakamal, right, um, and there were some questions, and when that came up, it's, it kind of looked at, um, all of the different issues, um, and the changes, so this was recommended, um.
So two ti- different types of, of licenses have been added, one is a license to sell wine at a farmer's market, and two, a farmer's series pouring permit. I know, why?
The ABC is their new license.
So just to have, yeah, right.
And the new fees proposed.
And how do we come up with that thirteen hundred bucks, given the wide range, thirty-five hundred in Barnstable, two hundred in Troy?
Wow.
Yeah.[1751.82] Yeah.
Yeah, three thousand in Barnstable.
How do we land at thirteen hundred?
Three thousand and fifty.
Wow.
Huh?
Three thousand and fifty.
Excuse me, three thousand and fifty.
We're rounding off.
We're getting loose with numbers today, so...
And I think it was, that's the pouring fee, right? That's the, uh...
Yeah.
Yeah.
They, was that just like an average they picked, or as far as a recommendation?
There, there were others that were lower than the, uh, Barnstable, I remember that. And, um, Christine had pulled up a lot of them on, online, and I think it was in more...
Not having a shock factor.
Yeah, it was more in moderate than the, uh, Hyannis Barnstable numbers.
Were we got Falmouth numbers?
Uh, Barnstable looks really high.
These are the numbers we chose, right?
Yeah, so just to look at rather than having to throw it out.
So these, these are initial rates though, right? We've never, we never, we didn't have something before.
No, wait, if you look at page, it's two thousand eighteen, it's two thousand seventeen, if you do this, you can kinda tell.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, you can see.
Sort of, because there's some new lines added, so it doesn't work that well. Um, but the one that jumped out is, you know, the annual package store went from thirteen hundred to two thousand. And...
I, uh, I'm confused.
Why would retail?
Two, two seventeen and two eighteen, line on this are all the same.
We went down in some. Retail. Oh, yeah, the lines don't line up.
The lines don't line up, so you can't do it that way.
But it's hard to compare.
Yeah, it is.
So I'm not really entirely sure what we're changing.
So Convent Vexel's license is thirteen hundred dollars, it says, right?
Right.
Right.
And that's the way it was before.
And it's staying pretty.
Correct, yeah.
I thought they were just adding those two licenses. Yeah, but the retail annual went up seven hundred bucks.
Retail annual.
Yeah, you should have a couple new ones.
I have, no, I have thirteen hundred on the retail annual, don't I?
Two thousand. Last year.
Retail package.
Retail package.
Retail package is two thousand.
I know we haven't gone up in years.
Do you want a comparison to...
Yeah, last year we did this, we did reorganize it and get it to be, um, all consistent with, with everything.
Yeah, I know, but I think...
And then we added these two this year, now, I don't know if there was another change in there. I wasn't here last week to figure it out. There might have been, it looks to me like there's some change, there's no basis for the change. I'm not, not necessarily object to it, but...
I thought that she only, we talked about it when Christine was, was the two, and that was that pour license, the farmer's pour, foreign license.
And the farmer's market.
You won't tell me?
Well, it's, it's, I'd like...
Be a nice comparison.
Compare, it, it, not only Falmouth, Sam, like, uh, you know... Uh, yeah, just to see, make sure that we're not totally, uh, out of it.
Out of line with the surrounding towns.
Right, those are the only two that we had talked about, that's...
They sound right to me.
I think there's only, and this one you threw at me, I'm not sure, but I thought there was only gonna be two changes on the whole.
That's what I thought.
You threw one that I'm not sure of, so I can check it. I mean, I'd just like to know why.
Your petition, retail.
The pour license is new because it's a farmer, it's totally different. That one's there, we had that conversation.
So I mean, the most useful format would be eighteen proposed, seventeen actuals next to one another, and if there's a difference, why?
Yeah.
And if it's new, then it's new. And then why it was picked at the level it's picked at? You know, if the answer is we wanna be in the middle of the pack, that's fine.
That's what we generally want.
I know, I, I don't know.
On the pour license, I think that's exactly what, what we grant.
I just wanna make sure that that's where we're at.
Right.
Yeah, but that's, those are simple.
So can this wait till the next, till first of January?
I don't see why.
It goes into, the next year though.
Yeah, it... But our first...
I don't mind letting them throw it now, but, uh...
It's, it's, it's our first, uh, our first meeting's what, January eighth?
When are we putting out the fees, we're billing people for when? Well, you're signing the licenses.
Tonight.
It's for next year, so it's kinda... Well, if we just look at it for another minute, we just decipher if there was any other discrepancies here.
Yeah, the, um, and it can be done next year too, I, I just wouldn't hate to say you're staying totally out of line with somewhere, but if these are last year's licenses, I don't, I didn't hear any complaints, did anyone else?
A lot of them, I was looking at, they're jiving, the other...
Hundred, hundred.
Yeah.
It looks like...
I'm checking now, but Andy, you did catch one that...
I mean, it affects five licenses over, and they will bitch at you if there's a reason for it. The annual retail, we did five of them, I thought.
Annual retail.
Pack, that's retail package, right?
Yeah.
That's the one.
Annual two.
Yeah, you know, if you wanna move them ahead, then you can, you can refund them, you're not gonna raise them.
Uh, I make a motion, we take the, uh...
Recommendation.
Because we're gonna follow it around January first, when they come up with the checks for all these.
That's fine.
I second.
Okay, that makes sense with this roll call? Okay, we have a first and a second on it to, uh, to move this as opposed to as written. Um, a, a roll call on it.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Okay.
Okay. Do you need a motion on, on the...
The Mantell property?
Mantell, Monmouth Goy, do you... Is there a motion written?
Yeah, I think we just have them... Yeah.
On December eighteenth, before, I'm just signing on environmental...
I make a motion, we, uh, approve the purchases, Mantell property.
I make a mo, first, let me make a motion that we include this, um, on the agenda.
On the agenda?
Second.
It is.
Well... Additional topics.
Came in after notice.
Yeah.
This is a first, a second.
I make a motion, we include it under the emergency provisions as advised by Town Council.
As advised by Town Council.
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call?
Yes.
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 Okay, I make a motion to, um, accept the deed of two seventy-one, Miss Goy Road.
Second.
Okay, um, do we need to list the, uh, map parcel, uh?
No.
Just the, okay, uh, roll call?
Yes.
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 Okay, um, that concludes all of the thing on the agenda, do we have any liaison reports?
No.
I do, unfortunately, as everybody knows, we did not have our Mashpee Chamber Christmas parade because of safety reasons, unfortunately, and we did not, and it's the first time we've ever canceled, and we've never thought about having a rain date. So next year, we will, the chamber will have a rain date, uh, which will be the following day, most likely.
Yeah, it's gotta be.
And... And second...
Good, you can kick 'em.
And, and second, I would like to congratulate our Mashpee Falcons on another great year. Not just the, our Mashpee Falcons should be congratulated, but the coaches and the parents of the students that backed these children up, they did an awesome job again.
And the yelp pouring of, um...
Of support.
Of support at the, at the game was amazing.
Don't forget the cheerleaders.
They're, it's all part of the Mashpee Falcons.
It was a great team effort across the board.
Absolutely.
Mashpee residents, team, coaching staff, and students.
Everybody, everybody.
Well done, congratulations, three-time Super Bowl champs, I don't know if that's ever happened before.
Well...
Very good.
We're making history.
Certainly are, small town of Mashpee, pretty cool.
Oh, and December twenty-ninth, on, um, Fox News, on Firehouse Friday, they will be, um, outlining our Mashpee Fire Department.
Right, and that's on that automatic resuscitation, that we had that presentation, uh, not that long ago, so, um...
Good stuff.
We do the licenses, auto licenses? Yeah.
Anybody else?
Nope.
Liaisons have been quiet, I don't know if I wanna get into the assembly, so, uh...
Maybe after the first of the year.
There we go, let's wait.
Should I make a motion to adjourn or...
I'm just, I'm just wondering why we, you know, we don't have anything on the agenda. Uh, and it's starting before our next meeting, so do you wanna add these to the agenda for the year?
They weren't, it wasn't, uh... We're gonna have to put it, make a motion to add it to the agenda.
I don't know.
Well, they're gonna have to be, uh...
Cause, next meeting, first day, yes, so...
So, it's just like, it's car dealers, is that what you're just...
Yes.
Taxes.
Liberty licenses and, uh, I just... I don't know, it wasn't on the agenda, I don't know.
So whether to make a motion, have a motion, Chairman?
Have we checked the taxes on them?
Yeah, that's a good question.